Eric, call a meeting to order. Uh, this is the salary committee. Uh, dated Tuesday, July sixteenth at five. Call a meeting to order, roll call, will be Randall.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Donna.
Here.
Robbie.
Here.
And all of them, I mean, so, all present. Alright, number three approved of the minutes for last meeting dated June nineteenth twenty twenty four. Everybody have a chance to look at a little bit?
I'll make that motion.
Um, so thanks, most approved. Take it for Patrick. All four?
Yes.
All four, here. Alright, number four, review salary schedule for twenty-four, twenty-five, and approve. Alright, all.
Hey, where we get started, uh? Steven, have you already called state?
Have, no, they're waiting on this meeting, I guess, but we, we.
You not called state?
We said that we might need assistance to give them a heads up.
Okay.
But they're not coming, they're after.
Well, you called it, I didn't want to waste nobody's time right now.
They waiting on us.
Okay.
Alright, I'll turn it over to you, but. You gonna go with these three plans?
Yes, okay, so there's three census papers in front of you. On the right, upper right-hand corner will say a six percent, a two dollar, and a three dollar. Those are the three here package you're looking at. What we have behind that is the appropriation, the budget, and the salary schedules that are, that apply to each one of those. So we have to make some of those, um, dig into it deeper. We have a summary, a summary page on, on the top page. And it's the same on the top page. To give you a comparison.
Is this something they want y'all to talk differently about last week? I'm just curious. I thought I had that paper and I was just wondering. Mr. Parker, is this something different?
If you don't know, I wouldn't have the last one either. I wouldn't hear, sorry. Alright, that was the budget committee. This is the first time the salary committee met on this part of it.
Just going. The column, two dollar, two dollar an hour, one percent. The difference is greater than the two dollar an hour on one percent. Trying to figure out what that is.
Which, which one is it?
I mean, summary page.
And what's larger?
The two percent. I mean, the two dollars now.
And this, and six percent?
Not two percent, three percent.
And six percent?
Two dollar an hour on one percent versus the three dollar an hour on one percent.
The total down here.
The two dollar an hour proposal should be less than the three dollar an hour?
I think that, that's with, with the salute, the alternatives of putting the million dollars out of debt service into. So, I think that, that's why we're seeing that, but we, we can go through it and see if it's.
Cause it looks like two dollars way to go there, if it's less.
So the six percent and the three percent still has the. Any thing else? If anybody have a chance to look over. What, uh, things turned over or do you?
But the most, the most exclusive is the three dollars.
No trouble, that's what I was wondering about.
You see, you see the number of pennies?
There's a good question.
I'm just looking at the summary page.
Yeah, looking at summary page in the middle.
Oh, got you, yes.
So the tax.
Got you, yep.
Look, look at those numbers in that one.
Okay. Alright.
So the six percent, six percent would be two point two zero. Right?
Yes, if you look at the six percent page seven. The six percent packet on page seven.
So, so the two dollar raise is only fourteen, fourteen percent.
That's still a point in time, though, she's asking, oh, I'm sorry, that's alright.
On page seven, the six percent. The tax rate would be two four two oh.
Which would make the taxes go up by twenty-two cents.
At one point nine seven, yeah.
From one point nine seven, twenty-two cents.
Twenty-three.
Or about twenty-three.
Yeah, you were below it.
Two point two zero eight eight eight, whatever.
And then percentage change would be twelve percent, twelve point eleven. It, it's underneath. And, and that's, of course, not meeting our goals of the, um, start page.
Right?
Six percent.
Oh, two.
Look at that.
Oh, I was saying, my, my human aspect on the three dollar an hour raise. It's gonna raise twenty-eight point two-six pennies over dollar ninety-six, it's fourteen percent, fourteen point four.
No, okay, so it takes twenty-eight, it's, it's saying that it would cost twenty-eight pennies for the salary increase.
Exactly.
Okay, and then if you go to that page seven. Two dollars is in the middle column. That would put your tax rate at two point two four.
Sure.
You have a estimated fund balance of five point six. That difference in tax rate from the current tax rate is twenty-seven cents.
Yep, twenty, okay.
Twenty percent.
Are you on the three dollar package?
I'm usually on package six.
I'm sorry.
Okay, Patrick, you're just too.
Alright, Donna, which, uh, with the six percent, let's run through it, so everybody knows what's going on, alright?
Alright, on the six percent. Um, at the, the first column you'll see the six percent, two dollars per hour, and nine percent, which is for reference, and then the three dollars on the, on the one percent scale. Alright, and it's of the different department and accounts. And it has the totals. So, the first one is five hundred forty-two thousand three sixty cents. And then underneath that you see the value of the tax pay at forty-four oh eight six. The number of taxpayers it takes for that increase is twelve point three zero. And then the next section is just an, an example where it is compared to last year's. So that's just a, a, a record number, so you can tell that you still, the salaries are still in the nine million dollars range. That's really all that's to show you back.
Okay.
On page two. At the six percent. It's, it's the appropriating resolution. And it has, has pages two through six, all on the different departments. And then on page seven. Page seven is the tax study resolution if this one is chosen. And the first column is the six percent. And that would be using a five dollar fifty-nine put into the general fund of the two dollars and twenty cent tax rate. Point oh eight five, solid waste. The same for the highway, general purpose school fund, point four four eight eight, for a total of two point two zero. That would give you, um, an estimated fund balance ending at five point seven. So that two point two zero minus the current tax rate at one point nine seven is twenty-three eighty-two. And that's a percentage difference of twelve point, twelve percent.
Okay, got you. We'll check it out.
And if you're going to page eight. Page eight will show you. How a dollar fifty-nine equates in the general fund for property tax. And what that does is put seven billion nine thousand six hundred ten dollars in the general fund property tax on item of four oh one one eight. And you'll see that on page twelve. That'd be the very first, um, number you see in the bar chart column, on page twelve. So you always wanna double-check that number to make sure, um, matching the tax rate of two point two zero. Again, the seven billion nine sixteen in the property tax. Now, if you go on page thirty-two. It will show you. Page thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Nope, I gotta go back over here. It used to be thirty-two. It's in there. It's twenty-seven. Sorry about that, it's page twenty-seven, you're fine. It's showing expenditures of twenty million three hundred ninety-five thousand three hundred eighty-one, and the end income balance of five point seven.
Yeah, nobody is to the fund balance that we need to be at, though, isn't it?
Yes, we need at least four point seven. So that's as of, that's last year, so. Five is, is still okay, but we're gonna be touching that range on all of them, it's just a little bit, it's gonna be a whole difference. Okay. So, um, the rest of the budget is all the other columns that are there. Put that in there so that when, when budget moves, they have to put all the numbers. And then at the back, I mean, it's the salary schedule, that's the increase of the six percent. Yeah, and the best is about the six percent. You might want to look at, um, a couple of the, um, salaries because it's, most of them is less than a dollar. So that's nowhere near a dollar. I'll let y'all look at that, and then you'll go to the two dollar one. The two dollars on the summary page is on the second column. Much better to show you the cost of the increase, it's only the cost of the increase, it's not the entire salary. So, for example, solid waste for a two dollar raise per hour, the raise portion would be one hundred twelve nine sixty-one. And with all the departments would be nine hundred twenty-six thousand six forty-seven. So it's how to take twenty-one taxpayers to get back. So pages, um, two through six is the appropriating resolution. And then on page seven. In the middle column. It shows what, two dollars. The general fund would be one point six oh nine nine. The solid waste, point oh eight five, highway, point one oh five. Then the general purpose school, point four four eight eight, so total of two twenty-four eight seven. That compared to the current tax rate is point two seven eighty-one, and the percentage change of fourteen percent. That is, that would be the end income balance of five point six. So we're still, okay, better. And that is still taking the one million from the interest earned on the debt service to put into the general fund, that's offset by that. If you go on to page eight. Page eight shows how much one point six oh nine nine equates to, that's seven million ninety-seven thousand three forty-one. Flip back over on page twelve to make sure that that's in the numbers, the bar chart column. Seven million ninety-seven three forty-one. And of course, this is, this is using the, the tax rate of two point two four eight seven. So we'll put it at twenty-seven. See what impact it has on the fund balance. That would be an estimated fund balance at the end of next year, five point six. And that's still within the guidelines of what we're doing. In, in this scenario, it's, um, it's a two dollar per hour, and then the highway fund would be funding one dollar per hour. If y'all have any questions, welcome on to, to three. Number three is where it was started at the beginning. Three dollars per hour. That's where we're looking somewhere, important employees. Trying to get a competitive rate at eight. And so you can see, you see the total of one two two forty dollars, two two one. That's the total, um, cost of the raises, and that's twenty-eight pennies. Oh, I know, I know what you're talking about, Patrick. What, what that is, is the changes that was made to the employment service. That was the employees, the foreman, we were gonna have three or four foremen. Those were, um, it was taken out because they're, they're not additional employees, they're.
Okay.
Same employees.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so then, your appropriating resolution is two through six. And then if you go to page seven. General fund would be one point six nine four. Solid waste, point oh eight five, highway, point one two eight six. And the general purpose school, point four four eight eight, so total of two point three five six four. Thirty-eight cents, one hundred and fifty cents. If you go on page eight. Page eight shows what, a dollar sixty-nine of the general fund would get seven million four hundred sixty-eight thousand one oh one, which is the general fund property tax.
Can you speak up, please?
So let me y'all look there and make sure that that is the right number. Seven million four hundred sixty-eight one oh one. That is the right number on page twelve. As you look up at page forty-four, it'll show what the fund balance impact is. Hold on, I'm sorry, Steven, I'm gonna get the wrong number, let me get the right one. It's okay, there's a lot of pages. Page thirty-two. Page thirty-two shows an end income balance estimated at five point five oh nine seven point six. And that is still within our guidelines of what we have to have in fund balance.
They like four point seven, right? That's what the.
Four point seven was what we needed, um, that was, that was our three months expenditures for last year. So you would want more than that for this year. But four point seven was the benchmark that we used when we were determining the budget.
Any questions, anyone? So. That's about it. Two thirty-eight on three dollars.
Three dollars, two point three five.
Two point three five. Two thirty-five.
Two thirty-five, sixty-four. Two, two point three five, six four. And it's thirty-eight cents.
Alright, so, anybody have any, any questions, if y'all understand everything, alright? We, uh, we need to make, come up with a solution here, if we vote on one of these three, uh, proposals. Six percent, two dollars, and three dollars, so.
What if we, what if we send the three dollars to budget, maybe have to look at it and see if there's any, any more. Work continues, we can sweep down lower, lower than the two thirty-five.
You wanna send it to the budget, see if you can get it lower than the two thirty-five on the three dollar?
Yeah, see if, see if we can come up some way to get to, get a lower, see if we can get a lower tax rate for the three dollars than the two thirty-five.
Where we gonna take it from, Randall?
Well, let's, let's find somewhere, and then, you know, we have, maybe take more out of the fund balance or something. Then, uh, to get it down, lower.
I, I, um, and I'm, I'm with for the three dollars. The only reason I'm with the three dollars is I've been hammering, we, we can't afford to get to jail, decertified, this would cost us four to five hundred thousand dollars a year to transport prisoners if they decertify to jail. We need to have, uh, money to get jailers to at least apply, let alone stay. And, uh, so, I'm, I'm for the three dollars.
Alright, Robbie, you have any thoughts?
No, just writing this down, I can't, I'm trying to get it.
Donna, you have anything more? And Jack?
Well, I'm not for the three dollars, so, uh, not that I'm not for it, but it's just we can't afford it. I think our, our employees deserve a big raise, but we're just standing for it.
Question? You think we could maybe even lower than the two thirty-five?
That's convenient.
We can take, we can take more out of our fund balance, as long as we don't get it down too low. And see what, see what it does. What it does. Am, take them, church departments, all, they won't mind if we keep, we need to get everybody excited.
Well, you know, we could do two, I would say two proposals, uh, one. And let the budget committee sit down, do the numbers, do the math, and then come up with a solution. And then maybe get the whole county commission together, all the commission together, and look over before we take a full court.
I'm for the, the, the two and the three, the six percent sounds good, except that the, the places were hurting to, to hire people. It only adds sixty, seventy, eighty cents to their starting pay, whereas the two and three dollar jumps it.
Why'd you follow the cop card?
So that, so that, uh, at least we can keep people, or at least have some decent people applying. So, yeah, for the, we'll send the two and three off to the budget committee.
I'll tell you all, I'll decide with the motion, if that's what we're gonna do.
I make a motion, send two and three dollars.
We have a motion on the floor for, for Patrick to.
Before this goes on, I want the public to realize a six percent would be a, a twelve percent increase in taxes. A two dollars would be a fourteen percent increase in taxes, in the taxes. And a three dollar would be a nineteen percent increase. When we say percent, we're talking. Six percent would be twenty. Twenty-two cents, right? Twenty-one?
Twenty-three. Twenty-three eighty-eight.
Twenty-three. A two dollar would be twenty-seven, twenty-seven point something cents. And then a three dollar would be thirty, how much?
Nineteen fifty-eight.
No.
Two thirty, two thirty-five.
Pennies, pennies or percent?
Be thirty-seven cents, pennies, pennies.
Well, pennies is different than percent.
Cause, cause a lot of people are not understanding the percentages, that, they think we're going at thirty-five percent, it's not thirty-five percent, it's thirty cents. With the, the three dollar one, right?
But it's fifteen, it's fifteen percent, so, uh, let's see, that's two dollars, three dollars point is, uh, nineteen point five eight percent, that's twenty percent.
Fourteen percent.
Fifteen.
Uh, twenty-seven cents.
The two dollar is, is fifteen percent.
What I was, just, let, let, let's just go back over and say, if any. Any, anything, you know, we can get out anywhere to get the, for any lower, cause we don't, we don't, we don't want states.
No, I don't want the states getting here, we gotta come up with a solution here, but I, no, I don't.
But we need to get as low as we can.
We have a motion on floor, if you have the two, or the three, or, or both, or we could do it.
We'll send, we'll send both of them.
And then, or you could add the six percent and the three dollars, and send it to court. Given them, given them an option, that's what they're talking about, so.
When was the last raise? December twelfth of twenty twenty-two, they used the COVID money.
And we're, we're trying to ask this out, so we're not gonna do question and answer right now, uh, we got to, we're meeting first. Got the personal, we're just thinking, we're gonna work on these numbers, so.
No, I do want the six percent.
So, that's where we're, we have a motion on floor for Patrick, the two, or the three. You gotta say it, alright? Any discussion? I would be better to send all three of them with another, or just not leave it out?
The only problem with, with the six percent is. The only problem with, with the six percent is that fifteen dollars an hour, which is where we are on the starting pay, it only nine cents, that's not gonna change it, why is it not getting any raises?
We got, we got something that's making fifteen dollars.
Yeah, so it's.
That's all we'll say, do something, Sam.
And so why is it not getting any raises? But the idea is to get people in these positions, so we don't, or by, or jailies or.
I mean, that, that cuts, that cuts out the, the six percent, that's not the highway department.
My stuff, my stuff's gone up, I mean, a four inch cap for a cleanup went from six dollars to seventeen dollars. That's way more than, more than six percent or even a two dollar raise.
All right, we have a motion for, for Patrick to send the three dollars and the two dollars back to the budget committee, and then secondly, by a round.
And the salary get back together and then the whole, whole court, whole court, court sent two.
Now, what's the motion to do?
Motion is to send a two dollar and a three dollar proposal to the budget committee, and they're gonna work on the numbers. And then they're gonna bring a solution back to the salary committee. And the salary committee decides, and then it will be, uh, to have a meeting with all of the other commissioners before we have a court meeting.
So they are, they are gonna have a work session with every county commissioner, so everybody has to say so?
I think that would be what we need to do.
That's what it needs to be, yes.
All right, everyone?
Motion.
Is it?
That's right, motion.
Well, let's make a motion.
All right, everybody understand the motion?
Yeah.
Let me say it one more time, be sure I vote it right.
That's fine. Uh, Patrick has proposed, made a motion to send three dollars proposal and the two dollars proposal to the budget committee. And they're here to look at the numbers, cut, cut anywhere they can cut the funds. Uh, if not, uh, come back with, with the proposal that they chose, uh, to the salary committee, and the salary committee will vote, and then we'll have a meeting with all the other commissioners who decided, or to discuss it, and then decide it next court meeting. Any other questions? Ready? You got anything else?
No.
Patrick?
Yes.
Randy? Donald?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
And I'll go next to you, so motion carried. The two and three dollars will go to the budget committee, and they'll look over that and get back to us. Any others you'd dispute? Next thing on the meeting. We're running behind time.
I did wonder if you wanted to talk or speak, but we're gonna be running into your.
For the salary committee?
Yep.
Where's the list at?
They haven't, they haven't.
Did we get a motion?
Come here. Everybody's got something, that's what. All right, uh, Gerald, if you're personally on the list, there'll be any questions?
Yeah, only raises. You, you're going, right across the board, everybody, right? That right? Okay. Why do you not give a raise? Everywhere I've ever worked in my life, every man in this room has worked, not sitting on his ass like a bunch of you all have. You get your raises for what you do, what you know, what you can do, not just because you got a job with a county. Everybody should get a raise, that's not right.
I'll take it, I agree with you a hundred percent, but, but the way the government's set up, we, we don't have it, we don't have that choice. It goes to departments, and departments do that. I don't run departments. This is, this is what we do as county commissioners. I'm just telling you, that's how it is.
Well, don't vote for it.
All right, uh, David, Al, your floor.
I'm calling and saying, find if there's any cuts, if there's any cuts. Every complaint that I've come with, it has been, the road committee has their own budget, you just don't do nothing with the road committee. The nursing home has their budget, they don't do nothing, they do their own little thing. But now, you just want to give the road people a dollar fifty raise, and Jackson Art's gonna match it a dollar fifty, so they will get three dollars too. Why I give them that dollar fifty if they have their own budget, like the nursing home, give the nursing home a dollar fifty, you know? And if, I mean, if the road committee is already making more than our EMTs and our law, then I don't see why, why would, that would be a no-brainer to me, don't give them nothing. If they have their own budget, they need to work out of that budget.
Excuse me, sir.
The only thing I got to say is it just, just sounds like Joe just dropped it in somebody else's lap tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's bad.
Everybody said he's gonna help there.
You thank Patrick for that.
Uh, David, stop it, David.
Yeah. No, I'm not.
Speak up, David.
How many, how many employees were you talking about?
Two fifty.
Pardon?
Two hundred and fifty, all of them.
Three dollars a, an hour.
Two hundred and fifty, except the nursing home, they don't get nothing. That's the term.
So it's, that's all, we've got the money to do all that?
No.
Is this on, is this on that million dollar, uh, insurance deal?
No.
We're not even listening.
Uh, oh, is this different than what we're paying for the, the?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm going there, I just wanted to know about this, a lot more pension. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dale, Devon? Ryan Dale?
People, I look at it this way, I've been doing stuff all my life, all my life, and I have never given straight across the board to nobody. And that's the fact, if you got good management, if you got good management, you talking about losing people? You got good leadership and good everything else, you can keep people, that's a fact.
Yes.
That's a proven fact. So like that, I think, I think that somebody needs to look at the management department first and figure it out what's going on. If you lose sixteen hundred man, it's something going on there, so.
Yep. I had.
That's a pure fact, there, people, you don't have to be a DA or dummy or whatever, you're on color, to realize that. Thank you.
Sandra, fix it. That's, go ahead.
Why is the road department separate than everything else?
Because the highway department receives a budget through the gas tax, it receives very little profit. Because the highway department receives ninety-five percent of its money comes from the gas tax. When you go to the pump to bill up that you're calling, we get a, a, a portion of that statewide. So that's the reason why the budget's different. The property, only profit tax that we, we have been getting in the past was eight, eight cents, is all we were getting, which is about three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars is what we were getting, and that money went toward oil and, and chips to work on the roads. Uh, they, there's a state-owned formula that they use to calculate that, uh, uh, the how much the rural area gets. It's a hundred percent, fifty percent goes to the metropolitan areas, or areas like Nashville, Los Angeles, Chattanooga. And then the rural communities, uh, counties have to divide it up among themselves, so that's how that breaks down. It's based on, uh, population, the size of the county.
Okay, and I wanna know about the convenience center out there, I don't.
That's a different thing.
We separated out, uh, recyclables, and cardboard's one of the big things, so is that solid waste?
I don't, I, I, the solid waste, I'm not as long as.
The cardboard is solid, and.
And what happens to that money?
It gets back into the fund.
County general.
To the solid waste fund?
Yes, it goes back into their fund.
To the budget.
It goes back in county general, ten minutes.
It goes back in.
That should make quite a bit of money. I told you the plan, but I worked that, we make quite a bit of money off that.
We, we use all the cardboard and, and bail it, we have a cardboard baller, and they, they come and get it. And yes, that money that they get goes back into the solid waste fund.
So are you, you putting that back in to figure on part of these raises?
Yes, ma'am, we, we take and use every bit of that.
And I heard, uh, you started talking about, uh, wasting money traveling these prisoners here and there. I know one particular one, the sheriff just didn't wanna deal with him anymore, the deputy or whatever. Let's just send him off to Bledsoe County, and for two days, drop him off real quick.
We don't have any control over what the sheriff does, he's elected official.
He was working smarter instead of harder, wasting money.
You'll have to call the sheriff about that. You'll have to call the sheriff about that, he's elected.
And I won't wait, we can get one more. We all have done budgets, we try and work smarter.
I do too.
You know, so I'm just asking that you do the same thing.
Thank you. All right, I'll let you go, you got four.
Well, I wanna know why you bought so many of those stuff, what were the Rango's?
I didn't buy any.
You all, everyone of you voted for it, you voted to buy those ambered sips. You guys have voted all this stuff in to buy, but you ain't made that cut one, not one, and don't start on that. Make some cuts.
Two percent across the board, all department heads should have funded two percent savings.
It's against the law.
How's it against the law?
You may need some effort, you have, you have to give what they got left, you, there's, there's no, there's, you can't, you don't have to.
You know, if you get a raise last year, then they don't get one this year. You ain't got the money to spend, and you ain't got it, that's just why, maybe in my budget, but if I, you can't spend something you ain't got.
It's against the law, it's against the budget, is that what you said?
Kathy, you're next.
She done asked my question.
I ain't on there, but can I ask a question, such as, or something? Can you explain to me what happened on December twelfth, twenty twenty-two? When y'all talked about the raises then, and y'all used the COVID money, which was over two million dollars? What happened to all that, and who, why did y'all approve that two dollar raise with our COVID money? And I went back and tried to watch the video, I couldn't hear nothing you were saying, nothing you were saying, none of y'all was saying, I couldn't really hear. And then when I go get the minutes, it still don't make no sense.
Twenty-two?
Yeah, it was December twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
That's whenever it came back through, uh, from the controller, uh, because they had to adjust the numbers. That was whenever they had to sustain the raises, you remember that, maybe? Had to sustain the raises, it was eight hundred and something thousand dollars to sustain. I remember what you're talking about, it was right after I'd started, the controller said we had to fix the numbers on it because the numbers were wrong.
Yeah, it was off, and then y'all fixed it, it went from one, one million, four hundred and eighty-seven, and y'all replaced it with the correct amount of over two million. But my thing is, y'all approved that right then for the raise, where did that money come? Why did you use the COVID? I mean, I, I mean, I really don't understand, so if you could help me understand that, Mr. Clark, if you approved it, your name's right here.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just curious.
I, you know, I'm trying to think what that was about, I think that most of the COVID money had went to the water line projects that come to that. It's gone to, you know, there was some going to the new health department, there's, uh, the community center in Monroe, there's a piece of money that we saved back for COVID, uh, money that was used. Most of that money that you're talking about was spent on, on the new, new structure for new things in the county to help with, to assist with. The raise, I'm not sure exactly which one of those you're talking about, the last county executive, you, uh.
It was number nine on tick twenty.
Was it a two dollar raise or what?
It was a ARP fund, one twenty-seven, and then they, and that's when y'all did a two dollar raise, and then the controller came in. But like I said, I couldn't hear the video, because it was gotten old, I guess, or something.
Right, at that time, I think the, the prior county executive had, had looked into that, saying we could use that COVID money to do, to help with the ratings, because there hadn't been many ratings given in quite some time. Uh, if you look back far enough, there's not been many raises that's been added.
Yeah, I was down there today, and I looked, we've been maxing years.
So, what I say, what he, what we did was, I, I think, the only way we could have done it, we'd had to have approval to give everybody that raise out of COVID money. And I do, I think it's due, now the highway department, you get that part, yeah, everybody got that part of the raise, I don't remember the nursing home, I don't remember.
We give the nursing, we have given the nursing home raises.
On top of it.
On top of all that.
But that was, at that time, it could be used for raises, and that's what we did with it, to help bring in the money, because the sheriff's department has came to us, it's like the era now, and traditional money for, for more staff, uh, uh, other departments that did the same thing at the time. Analyst service, act, you know, and so forth, so that's what that money was used for.
And I think at the time.
Yeah, we went by the guy.
I think at the time, that's the time that Derek Sidwell contacted, uh, uh, he got the, the COVID and he got and, and a lot of people, uh, was having to stay home, they would have to stay over there and work the whole total time that they was there, shift after shift, after shift, because so many people had COVID. And, and be honest with you guys, we thought, we felt that they deserved that, because a lot of people got really sick. A lot of people had to retire over that, Derek Sidwell lost his life over that. Uh, a lot of stuff went on, it wasn't just that we give them a two dollar raise and said hunky-dory, there was a lot of stuff went into that.
Mr. Clark, kind of something, um, I think most of us are, uh, thought that the new health department, there was a grant being received for that, but if I understood you correct, um, you said that part of that come from the COVID?
We had some COVID.
Money that she talked about? How long has this new health department been into play?
This has been, been going on ever since five or six years, this has been, we've been waiting on the state to, to tell us when they wanted us to build. So they, it's my understanding, the state, uh, had come in, and they wanted to redo all the old health departments across the state of Tennessee. Okay, and so they started that somewhere down away from here, because we just now got to the green line with Steven, I don't know if you're when to start. But it was in the works for the last five years, so we, we knew that we had a match, uh, that had to be made to that amount of money at that time. And so, uh, that COVID money that we're talking about could be used for that match, and so that's why we set it aside. We had X number of years before we would have to make sure it's all spent, or have it all earmarked for whatever, so. At that time, when we found out we were gonna get, was it five million dollars on the front, and I think we'll end up getting more than that now, but we had to match that, and that COVID money was acceptable to do that, that's what we done, we put it quit it. And that's why, and it's, it ain't costing you all no additional tax money to do it, even though it came from the Fed, it was all paid verbal tax every year, so I did too, everybody else did. But that, but that, but that was, uh, sent down to Washington to us, so, yes, ma'am.
All right, so, I don't know when the meeting was, but did you?
All right. So I don't know when the meeting was, but was it your big idea? Because I've heard your name so much.
I think it's been dropping a lot.
That you wanted, you wanted to do seventy percent.
No, it's not true. That's a lie.
Have, have you called any of these people or any of the other commissioners and told them how to vote?
No, ma'am.
Because we've all heard that too, that you're the big guy. You're the one that's doing it all.
Else has done that too, anyway. Just so they.
I'm just curious.
Oh, I've been honestly, somebody, you know.
I don't know you, and you don't know me, but I've been hearing your name everywhere I go.
It's easy to drop.
It's Mr. Clark said this, and Mr. Clark said that. Well, I almost went over there to your office.
Well, why didn't you come over?
Well, because I didn't really want to go by myself, and he cussed me out or something. I was perfect. Threatened my job, and Gerald took it. Now, I was when the Gerald took, he could get my bodyguard, he could take me.
I said, you've been welcome to brag into it. You wanted to come out. You know that. You're always welcome.
Well, I mean, I just keep hearing your name.
Well, it's dropping my name for some reason, you know, and I'm not saying anything, you know. I didn't buy anything. I didn't, I didn't propose this.
I suggest you talk to your little commissioners, because they all, they, they all blamed it on me.
Everybody.
Ninety percent. No, y'all. I didn't say you. I didn't say you. I said five percent of.
Well, that shows how much our support we have, as a union, so.
Yeah.
Kathy?
Question. Those sound a kind of stupid. When you talk about peons in percentage. When you talk about the peons in percentage, these only raises, and, and what it takes, uh, when you talk about six percent, is that six percent of a one peon? Or is that six percent on the dollar, which would be, uh, six dollars on the hundred, sixty dollars on the thousand?
The six percent you're talking about will be on their salary, whatever they make. They'll get six percent right on. Yes.
Okay, so.
That's not on what you're talking about.
Okay, so they're going to give the six percent that you're proposing is to give the county workers a raise. That's a six percent raise. That's what you're hoping, right?
Right.
Okay. As long as I'm prepared to ask the question that probably needs to ask right now. Is this the, the property tax? That's what I want to know. Is, is it still on for thirty-five, nine percent?
No. That's what I was trying to explain. A lot of people. They want German.
Nothing more hate, grandma.
No. No, that, that would be the three dollars. Yes, you're correct. All right. If the, the three dollars, it would just be nineteen percent, not thirty-five percent. Which nineteen percent will be.
Nineteen point eight, almost twenty.
Thirty cents.
All right, that's a, that's a list, so.
Thirty percent.
No.
I'll entertain.
Thirty cents.
We gotta get to the next meeting, so I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
But let me ask one more question.
I'll say one thing. All right?
Your general fund, how's it set up? I mean, how do you, what is exactly is your general fund? Where does the money come from? That's what I want. Because you know people talking about paying, maybe giving, maybe giving some of the, the boys the raise out of the general fund. So where does that money come from? I mean, does it come from the property tax? You wrote that to state.
Some of, some of the property tax, yes. We have a whole, whole list, uh, if you'll, if you'll give it to budget. Did you get back it?
I got it here. I didn't see how many pages were about to be stood. And I sent a book out there.
Start on page twelve.
No, page twelve.
Is it on the three-dollar page or the three-dollar page?
I love them all. Go page twelve. So you see all those numbers on the left-hand side?
I see. That's why I'm down here, is the local tax?
Yeah.
And the property tax, of course. And current property tax.
So page twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, shows you all the different rates.
So, so I used to, if I'm reading it right, the current property tax, seven, four, six, eight thousand, one hundred. Change.
Yes. To that portion of the general.
But a lot of that money keeps being used for certain things, like the hotel motel tax. Has to be used for tourism only. So a lot of that goes for like chambers.
This, this is, that's still, that's still a little bump up above here. Are you telling me that if young Paiste, I'm glad so, that the raise is actually a problem, he's going to go up nineteen, nine percent, that's nineteen high peonies, eight percent?
No.
Huh?
No. It's thirty pennies, thirty cents to the hundred.
Okay.
Which would be a nineteen percent.
Because it's thirty, it's thirty pennies, it's thirty two pennies. We're around off to one, one, nine.
Per hundred.
It's a hundred and ninety-seven pennies now. So the pennies on top of that, thirty-five, just divide that, and that's where you get your percentage. Dollar ninety-seven, and then your pennies on top of that is dividing the dollar ninety-seven, one point nine seven. So it's not on the hundred when you're talking about pennies. That's where the confusion is.
Okay, so.
Thirty cents per hundred.
So my taxes was a hundred dollars, and that went through. That would make my taxes a hundred dollars and thirty cents.
All right. We're going to entertain the motion to adjourn.
I just want to say one thing. Anybody who wants to, anybody who wants to call me or come talk to me, I say this every time, please do. I've had two phone calls, maybe three, from, from the big, from the, from the courts, almost two, three weeks ago. Guys, come talk to me. I'll, I'll give you ice tea to drink, and we can talk about this. There's, that way we can get these meetings done. But yeah, all of us, callers. We're very reasonable. We're glad to talk to you.
Is there a, do you guys have the same money? Why is it contacting you?
It's on the website.
Yeah, it's on the website.
I can tell a lot of you are interested and really deeply concerned and would like to understand what's going on. And there is a, a, a class that they have at the chamber called Leadership Overton. And it's going on right now, but she does them, uh, very often. And it would be great for you to take that and maybe you could understand more of what, what we have to deal with.
Is that not the state?
State lady?
No.
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 What we said was talking about the accident. Well, a statement for a while.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
You said that was the leadership over.
Yes, if you're interested in the email address, it's info@leadershipoverton.com. You can email us, and we can, we can help facilitate the assignment.